New Jersey statutes and the rules adopted by the Board of Education notice that this meeting was sent to the rural community newspapers, the Star Ledger, and Cable Vision of Elizabeth on Monday, August 13, 2012. In addition, this notice is posted on a bulletin board in the lobby of 500 North Broad Street, and pursuant to this act, a copy has been filed with the City Clerk of Elizabeth. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers to this August 16, 2012, meeting of the Board of Education. We are here to govern, provide management oversight, and make policy for this district. The superintendent manages the district. This is a meeting of the Board in public, not a meeting of the public. This meeting is being recorded and will become part of the Elizabeth Board of Education's permanent record. In order that the recording will adequately reflect the proceedings, please refrain from talking while others are speaking. I also ask that you silence the sound of your electronic devices since it is legally mandated that these proceedings be accurately recorded. I may have to ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased that you have taken time this evening to join us. Thank you for your interest in the Elizabeth Public Schools. There will be a public portion for citizens to address the Board. Participants to the public portion must sign one hour prior to the advertised start of the meeting so that they may have the opportunity to speak. The signing sheet states the name, address, telephone number, and reason that the person wants to come, whether it is an agenda item or a general education comment. Roll call. No, I'm sorry. The President requests the motion go into private session after we convene in public.
Aristov.
Here.
Castilla.
Here.
Denosa.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Man.
Here.
Hadla.
Here.
Ferrera.
Here.
Trahia.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez, would you please give us an indication? All stand, please.
Please bow your heads. On the contrary, thank you for being here today for conducting the This is the Board for the children of Elizabeth. We ask you for wisdom. We ask you for patience. We ask you for a lot of great things for our children as we are getting ready to start a new school year next month. We ask you to bless us in the name of your Son Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Please remain silent for the Pledge of Ethics.
My religion is inspired by the United States of America and its beautiful heart, which is standing in our nation under God, in this world, with the living and the dead.
And now the Star Spangled Banner by Francis Scott Key.
Oh, say can you see by the dark journey of light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's free wave? Roosted stars and bright stars through the perilous path, o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the bombs are singing hell, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
And now the Pledge of Ethics. As a member of the Elizabeth Public Schools' professional learning community, I will treat people as I wish to be treated. To do that, I pledge to. Understand that the school community is a special place. Listen respectfully when someone else is speaking by paying close attention and not interrupting. Speak in a calm voice and use proper language. Dress appropriately for teaching and learning. Inspire the best in myself and others by celebrating successes and learning from mistakes. Care about others by demonstrating acts of kindness. Be a lifelong learner by taking every opportunity to learn from others.
We believe all students in learning to achieve the high goals.
We will ensure that all students graduate prepared to pursue their post-secondary education.
We believe that teachers make positive efforts in student achievement.
We will improve, develop, retain, and celebrate world-class teachers.
We believe that effective leaders produce excellent results.
We will improve, develop, retain, and more result general leaders.
We believe that a high performance team produces a legacy of enduring greatness.
We will build a high performance team that achieves excellence.
The President requests the motion go into private session to consider matters exempt under the Open Public Meetings Act, specifically for the discussion of personnel, contracts, and legal matter. The Board will reconvene in public, and you may take formal action. My apologies, there's been a slight change in the order of the agenda of the meeting. This Board would like to recognize Honorable Christian Rodriguez, Colombian General Counsel in Newark, New Jersey, for his support of the Colombian community in Elizabeth.
Good night, everybody. Well, it was a very surprise for me to receive all this recognition. First of all, I want to tell you that I'm very, first, happy to be here, and, second, I've been in Elizabeth schools several times, and we are very happy the way that the Board of Education runs these schools here. You have written some information about excellence, and I think that you deserve it because I'm very surprised about the way you work here in the United States, and I'm learning about how the Board of Education is organized. I really want to congratulate all the members of this Board because, you know, the only thing I receive from the Colombian kids that come to your school is that they are very happy to be here. So now I didn't have to talk about Colombians and also about the Spanish people because there is a lot of Spanish that are in Elizabeth. Thank you very much for everything, and to the Colombian peoples who's here, I'll be glad to attend you at the 550 Broad Street in Newark. We're there, so we'll be very happy to have you there.
Board of Education Resolution: Colombia's Independence Day. Whereas the Republic of Colombia is the 26th largest nation in the world and has a long tradition of constitutional government, and whereas, before being known as the Republic of Colombia, the region was known as the Viceroyty of New Granada, following occupation by Spain in 1499. Whereas, Simon Bolivar, facing perceived insurmountable odds of failure, led a small army against the Spanish Royalist Army in an attack on New Granada and defeated the Spanish forces. And whereas, the defeat led to the independence of the Republic of Colombia, then renamed Gran Colombia, on July 20, 1819. And whereas, the Bolivar-led fight for independence for Colombia ultimately led to the independence of Venezuela and Ecuador. And whereas, since claiming their independence, people of Colombian heritage here in the United States, in Colombia, and throughout the world have made many positive impacts on the advancement of our society. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Elizabeth Board of Education recognize Colombia's Independence Day in honor of the contributions of Colombians in Elizabeth Public Schools' community and beyond. Be it further resolved that the resolution be spread on the official agenda of the Elizabeth Board of Education. Thank you very much. Mr. Kennedy, will you please lead us to the agenda?
Thank you. Prove the minutes of the Board meeting of July 19.
Move the minutes.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Ferrera, seconded by Ms. Espina. Roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castilla. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Man.
Yes.
Ferrera.
Yes.
Trahia.
Yes.
Denosa.
Yes.
Acceptance of the Secretary's report for the month of June. Is that the report?
The second.
Motion made by Mr. Gonzalez, seconded by Ms. Espina. Roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Man.
Yes.
Ferrera.
Yes.
Trahia.
Yes.
Denosa. Two A Personnel Report. Will the report?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Gonzalez, seconded by Ms. Espina. Roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Man.
Yes.
Ferrera.
Yes.
Mr. Denosa.
Two B Personnel Report. Will the report?
Motion made by Mr. Gonzalez, seconded by Mr. Ferrera. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Man.
Yes.
Ferrera.
Yes.
Trahia.
Stay.
Denosa. Three Tuition Report. Is that tuition?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Gonzalez, seconded by Mr. Ferrera. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Man.
Yes.
Ferrera.
Yes.
Trahia.
Yes.
Denosa.
Yes.
Four A Request for Considerations.
Will the report?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Aristov, seconded by Mr. Ferrera. Any questions or comments? For the record, pardon me, motion made by Mr. Man, Mr. Kennedy. Seconded by Mr. Ferrera. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Man.
Yes.
Ferrera.
Yes.
Trahia.
Yes.
Denosa. At four B Use of Facilities.
Move the report.
Second. Waive the fees for this consideration, to waive the fees for this section.
We have a question.
We waive the fees.
Okay. Motion made by Ms. Aristov, seconded by Mr. Ferrera. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call.
Just one question, Mr. Denosa, this is with waiver of all fees, is that correct? You will be for being with the waiver of all fees, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes, at same time, number three, number five.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Man.
Yes.
Ferrera.
Yes.
Trahia.
Stay.
Denosa. Four B Use of Facilities with Fees. Will the report?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Gonzalez, seconded by Mr. Man. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Man.
Yes.
Ferrera.
Yes.
Trahia.
Yes.
Denosa. Four C Field Trips.
Move the report.
Motion made by Mr. Ferrera, seconded by Mr. Man. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Man.
Yes.
Ferrera.
Yes.
Trahia.
Yes.
Denosa.
Yes.
Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
I'd like to report to the public news that all members of the Board, the Excellence Activities, and news that's occurred in the Elizabeth Public Schools since our last board meeting. Elizabeth Public Schools holds an Excellence Parade, one of the largest parades the city of Elizabeth has seen. The Excellence Parade came marching up Elizabeth Avenue on Saturday, April 21st, just before dinner. Over 4,000 students and team members representing every one of the district's very few schools participated by marching, singing, dancing, and waving flags and banners to show pride in their respective schools, and students many and varied accomplishments. There were decorated floats, trucks, and convertibles, horses, mascots of every kind, and even a large elephant, accompanied by the riders, making their way from Union Square to the Dunk Sports Center on the Wall Street. Three main floats depicted the focus of school districts on excellence in academics, athletics, and the arts. Terrance C. Riley, School Number Seven, received her first thesis designation with National Blue Ribbon School in 2011, joining National Blue Ribbon Schools Victor Madalas, School Number 21, and William F. Howard, School Number 22. Students from these three schools have been seen on academic excellence floats as they drove by. Music filled the streets as the Elizabeth High School marching band where the USSVA Group 5A National Championship performed a selection from their colorful field show in Santa Ana Live in concert featuring Isaac D'Amico in the role of Carlos Santana. Members of the varsity basketball team, North Two Group Four State Sectional Champions, were highlighted on the Athletic Excellence Globe. The celebration of athletic excellence extended to teams, individuals, and coaches in football, soccer, track, wrestling, field hockey, cheerleading, and tennis, who brought honor to the district with their many important victories. Elizabeth's six high schools had no shortage of representation, representatives with large contingents of students coming out to show their school pride by cheering and sometimes singing about their particular schools. The Excellence Parade was the idea of Terrance C. Riley, a principal from Sedanu, who wanted to celebrate the school's national blue ribbon recognition. Her idea created a great deal of interest, and immediately other principals, music directors, coaches, and teachers wanted to have their successes celebrated. Everyone wanted to show their school pride in their particular accomplishments so that by the time the parade was fully organized, over 50 contingents were represented. The parade highlighted successes in the academics, athletics, and the arts, including Terrance C. Riley, School Number Seven, being named the district's third national blue ribbon school along with Victor Madalas, School 21, and William F. Howard, School Number 22. Elizabeth High School, ranked number two high school in the state of New Jersey by the Washington Post. 330 Elizabeth Public Schools students achieving a perfect score on their New Jersey State exam. Individual and team athletic awards in high school sports, high school soccer, football, and basketball. The selection of Chris Valent as Union County Basketball Coach of the Year, and the Elizabeth High School marching band winning state and national titles. The Excellence Parade was an opportunity for all of Elizabeth to come together as a community and to thank the team members, parents, guardians, and most taxpayers of Elizabeth and the state of New Jersey for the continued support of the Elizabeth Public Schools and its goal to achieve excellence in academics, athletics, and the arts. Elizabeth High School, Frank J. Cicarel, candidate, first school to break ground in SVA's new capital program. Committed to advancing and completing capital program projects in a timely manner, as promised, SVA's CEO, Mark Markins, and the Elizabeth Public School officials broke ground on a new academic high school. The groundbreaking marks the first school for the 2011 capital portfolio to advance into construction, following Governor Christie's implementation of critical reforms at the SVA. This is an exciting day for the Elizabeth community and the state school construction program. The construction of the academic high school is the realization of the Christie's administration's commitment to a school construction program that delivers exemplary educational facilities with a focus on sound design and construction principles to ensure efficient use of public funds. Generations of Elizabeth students will benefit greatly from the educational opportunities this new school will provide. The event marked the commencement of the first phase of the work to prepare the project site for construction of the new high school building. Work will include clearing the site, removal of subsurface footings and foundations, removal of unsuitable soils, remediating areas of concern, and importation of certified clean fills to be compacted and graded in accordance of all applicable state and federal regulations. The 183,822-square-foot, four-story facility designed to educate 1,100 students will be constructed on a 1.54-acre site adjacent to the existing Jefferson High School. The new facility will contain 36 regular education classrooms, eight science labs, eight small group instruction classrooms, five self-contained special education classrooms, a auditorium, cafeteria, and full-service kitchen, a gymnasium with lock rooms and showers, as well as a facility, gymnasium, and a media center. The facility will also include special rooms such as a health and fitness suite, photo lab with art rooms, student activity center, CAD, computer-aided design classroom, engineering and robotics rooms, international marketplace room, law, forensic, science room, choir music room, band room, midi musical instrument digital interface classroom, computer science classrooms, three teacher workrooms, administrator's office, and the nursing suite. This project was selected for advancement as part of the 2011 capital project portfolio announced by the government. This project is an example of what can be accomplished with cooperative collaboration and the commitment of ensuring the best possible opportunities for Elizabeth students. The construction of the new academic high school will strengthen our community and provide our students with a state-of-the-art facility to help them prepare for post-secondary education. The Elizabeth Public Schools by the number. Number one, urban school district in the state of New Jersey. Number two, rank given to Elizabeth High School in 2012 by the Washington Post in ranking the top high schools in New Jersey as well as America for preparing students for post-secondary education. Three, the number of national blue ribbon schools awarded by the United States Department of Education in Elizabeth, Terrance C. Riley, School Number Seven, Victor Madalas, School Number 21, and William F. Howard, School Number 22. Twelve, the number of schools added to the extended day program for the 2011-12 school year as part of the Elizabeth Board of Education Accelerating Excellence Plan. Number fourteen, rank given to the Elizabeth High School football team by the Star Ledger in its final 2011 Top 20 State Football Rankings. Seventeen, the number of schools in the district that have been designated as National Healthy Schools by the Alliance of the Healthy Generation in partnership with the William J. Clinton Foundation and the American Heart Association. Fifty-one, the number of points scored by the Elizabeth High School varsity boys' basketball team in their 51-47 victory over Bridgewater Raritan to claim the Group Four North Jersey Section Two Championship. Ninety-seven point 413, the school record scored in 2011 by the Elizabeth High School marching band in winning its first USSVA Group 5A National Championship in team history. Three hundred and thirty, the record number of perfect scores achieved on the MJS grades three to eight in 2011 by Elizabeth Public Schools students. Three hundred and fifty-six, the number of 11th and 12th grade honor roll students presented with the New Jersey Devils tickets as part of the New Jersey Devils Student Honor Roll in 2012. And the number 3,000, the number of iPads distributed throughout the Elizabeth Public Schools as part of the district's effort to increase educational innovation and emphasize the use of technology. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Munn. Mr. Kennedy, will you continue with the agenda?
Thank you. Tap five, Authorization Report. Move the report.
Motion made by Mr. Trivio, seconded by Ms. Munn. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Ferrer. Trivia.
Yes.
Denosa. Five A supplemental authorization report. Move the report.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Trivio, seconded by Ms. Munn. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trivia.
Yes.
Denosa.
Yes. And Mr. Kennedy, the president would like to recognize former board member Armando da Thank you.
Mr. Kennedy, I'd like to change my vote on a couple of tabs, previous tabs. Tap 2A, page 42, and tap 2B, page 16, Denosa. Thank you. Six A, finance and accounting report. Move the claims.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Trivio, seconded by Ms. Munn. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trivia.
Epstein.
Denosa.
Yes.
Six A, transfer of funds.
Transfer the funds.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Trivio, seconded by Mr. Ferrer. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trivia.
Yes.
Denosa. Seven, award of contracts.
Award of contracts.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Ferrer, seconded by Ms. Aristov. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trivia.
Yes.
Denosa.
Yes.
Seven A supplemental award of contracts.
Award of contract.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Gonzalez, seconded by Mr. Ferrer. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trivia.
Yes.
Denosa. The link, communications tab eight, there are none. Tap nine, claim list.
Move the report.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Gonzalez, seconded by Mr. Ferrer. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trivia.
Yes.
Denosa. Someone like to read Resolution Number 10?
Mr. Ferrer would you kindly read 10, Resolution 10?
Yes, Mr. Ferrer. Board of Education Resolution, National Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas throughout our nation's history, men and women of Spanish and Latin American descent have played important roles in the growth, development, and success of our country. And whereas time and time again, Hispanic Americans have come to the United States, often in search of the freedoms denied them by the repressive regimes controlling their homelands. And whereas adopting this country as their own, Hispanic Americans have consistently demonstrated their dedication to the ideals upon which the United States is founded. And whereas with faith and hard work, these individuals have built strong families and proud communities and have earned positions of leadership in business, education, sports, the sciences, and the arts, and have assumed leadership roles in government. And whereas Hispanic Americans have made their mark across the country and on virtually every aspect of American life, now therefore be it resolved that members of the Elizabeth Board of Education hereby proclaim September 15, 2012 through October 15, 2012 as National Hispanic Heritage Month. Be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be forwarded to all school principals and librarians to encourage the observance of National Hispanic Heritage Month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. End of this resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Ferrer, seconded by Mr. Gonzalez. Any questions or comments?
Denosa, I'd like to say, I'm going to hold the affirmative for this resolution, but I think it's a great honor being a Hispanic American to be able to serve my community here in the capacity that I do. And I believe the others that are here as well could say the same. But I think that it's important that we not forget where we are and that this great country is ours and that we assimilate and learn to love it and teach those that come after us that this is a great country and we should all become a part of it and really own it. I know sometimes it's hard, but where else in the world could you come and have so much opportunity and yet be able to celebrate your culture and those of others? It's an incredible place and I am truly honored to be in this country and to be able to serve in this capacity and serve my capacity as a Hispanic American, Cuban American, to be exact. Thank you, Mr. Denosa.
Thank you, Mr. Trivio. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trivia.
Yes.
Denosa.
Yes.
Resolution 10A, adoption of five-year curriculum plan for the 1213 school year.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Ferrer, seconded by Ms. Aristov. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trivia.
Yes.
Denosa.
Yes.
Resolution 10B, curriculum guides for the 1213 school year.
Move the resolution. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Gonzalez, seconded by Ms. Aristov. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trivia.
Yes.
Denosa. Resolution 10C, programs of study for 1213.
Move the resolution. Second.
Motion made by Ms. Munn, seconded by Ms. Aristov. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trivia.
Yes.
Denosa.
Yes.
Resolution 10D, textbooks in use for the 1213 school year.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Gonzalez, seconded by Ms. Munn. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trivia.
Yes.
Denosa. We have the second reading of revised policy school uniforms, file code 5132, and a resolution for adoption.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Gonzalez, seconded by Ms. Munn. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trivia.
Yes.
Denosa. Resolution 10N, amended of the long-range facility plan and pre-development application.
Move the resolution.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Gonzalez, seconded by Mr. Ferrer. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trivia.
Yes.
Denosa. Resolution 10G, flexible spending account administration.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Gonzalez, seconded by Ms. Castilla. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trivia.
Epstein.
Denosa. Resolution 10H, Cobra Services.
Move the resolution. Second.
Motion made by Ms. Munn, seconded by Ms. Castilla. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trivia.
Epstein.
Denosa. We have the first reading of the policy, 5131.2, gangs and gang-related activities. The policy is available for review in the Office of the School Business Administrative Board Secretary, and that concludes the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. The president requests a motion to go into private session to consider matters exempt under the Open Public Meetings Act, specifically for discussion of personnel, specifically reorganization, rental properties, and revision of board policies, harassment, intimidation, and bullying results, and workers' compensation plans specifically. GK, JG, RD, RR, CS, DK, NO, SL, MD, CK, JB, JV. The board will reconvene in public to take formal action.
Motion to go into private session. Second.
If I may.
Mr. Trivio.
May I ask Ms. Munn to withdraw her motion to go into private.
Can I get a motion to withdraw the motion?
Motion to withdraw the motion.
Second.
Make the motion made by Mr. Gonzalez, seconded by Ms. Aristov. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trivia.
Yes.
Denosa.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to open public portion, public speaking portion.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Trivio, seconded by Mr. Ferrer. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trivia.
Yes.
Denosa.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Citizens may address the board. At this time, the microphones are open for public comment to those who have signed in prior to this session. I shall call individuals to the microphone based on the order of the signing. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes in duration. The total time of public comment shall be limited to 60 minutes. No individual is able to yield their time to another individual. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members individually. The following rules for public participation shall apply. Time limits will be strictly enforced, no personal attacks on individuals, no vulgar or indecent language. A person may address the board no more than once during a single meeting. Speakers should refrain from naming individuals. Comments or questions posed during the public participation will not be debated. As a reminder, this is a meeting of the board in public, not a meeting of the public. At this time, I close the public comment portion of this meeting. Pardon me. I'd like to call to the microphone Jose Rodriguez, 618 Jackson Ave.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Again, I'm Jose Rodriguez and Trivio thanking for making that motion and allowing us to speak before about too late. I just want to speak about two things tonight. The first one is on Friday, sadly, I attended a vigil for a young gentleman named Anthony Holmes Jr. who was tragically gunned down in the corner of Third and Pine Hill, Elizabeth, in the first ward. And while I did not know the gentleman, and he had actually moved out of Elizabeth, he actually came back to take care of his sick grandmother, I went to, for many reasons, but when I went there, I saw the pain, obviously, of the family, many members of my community, of our community, who tragically saw an 18-year-old lose his life. The suspects haven't been caught, but they are pretty sure that they are, you know, a secondary-aged students. While I was at the vigil, I had met many people there, lots of parents who actually have lost children here in Elizabeth and surrounding areas. Now, the reason I bring this up is because Anthony Holmes, along with other students, not just in our community, but especially in our community, have lots of hopes, dreams, desires, and we know we have a crime problem here in Elizabeth. It could be a gang issue, in general, it's just a crime issue. Now, in that community, there's a higher rate of crime than in any other community here in Elizabeth. And then later on that night, I looked, and we have two community schools there, School Number One and School Number 28, which New Jersey last year have found that are high-priority schools, which means that a subgroup, the African-American subgroup in those two schools, have been found to score exceptionally lower than any other subgroup in those two schools. And again, I know I've commented before that bad schools don't make bad communities. I truly believe that bad communities make, oh, I'm sorry, let's take that back, that bad communities don't make bad schools. It's really bad schools that make these bad communities. The other thing I also wanted to talk about is also that our five, five out of our six high schools, again determined by the Department of Education, you can find these on the website, five of them, which are Elizabeth High School, Upper Academy, Dewire Academy, Paul'sine,[1797.28] five of them, which are Elizabeth High School, Upper Academy, Dwyer Academy, Paul Zing, Jefferson, and Edison, have lower than seventy-five percent graduation rate in two thousand and eleven. It's something that we definitely need to fix and it's, I know it's a pet peeve of mine and I've constantly come up here and spoken about that issue. The last issue is one that I see in lots of banners across the city. It's about the Elizabeth High School still being the number two high school in the state by rankings of the US News, which US News has their rankings.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Rodriguez. Thank you for your comments.
That's it, I'm leaving.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Rodriguez, if I may, if I may, would you indulge me? I mean, you know, it's been a, it's been an interesting ride that you've been going through the board meetings, you've come all this, I think it's great that you, you know, you do that and, and, you know, let me start by saying, you know, you and I haven't seen eye to eye on a lot of these issues. And that's okay. I mean, you have your opinion, I have mine. We have to respect each other at the end of the day. You, you know, you feel the way you feel and you have a right to do that. And if anybody here really supports your, your opinion to have an opinion, or, you know, or your right to have an opinion rather, it's me, because I really believe that that's the great thing about this country, that even when we're wrong, we have a right to say what we want to say. Having said that, you know, sometimes I, when there, when there's a candidate for the office of the Elizabeth Board of Head, I have to question motives and, and, and wonder why they want to run, what, you know, what drives them to want to run? And I say this not only as someone who sits on this board and serves this community, but somebody who has children in the schools and, and has a lot invested. I've invested a lot of my time here and sacrificed away from my family, and that's what many of the board members do here. It's really an honorable position, so, and I do it with a lot of passion. So, you know, I always have that question. One of our biggest critics is Senator Raymond Lesniak. You know Senator Lesniak? You know, and I believe he supported you in the past. You ran last time and, and you were unsuccessful last year, but I believe the senator supports you. Am I correct in saying that?
Along with many others, correct.
Along with many others, I'm sure, yes. But Senator Lesniak is, is a strong critic of this board. And he doesn't share a lot of the, the same views we have. So, when someone like that supports you, I, I, I'm cautious. In fact, I believe he even had a fundraiser at his house for you. Am I correct in saying that?
No.
No, correct. Okay. He's never supported you financially, like in campaign?
Along with many others.
Okay, he has, okay. And he's probably one of the bigger supporters you have. Would you say he's the biggest supporter you have?
No.
Okay, all right. No, that's fine. I mean, I'm just, I'm just wondering. But, you know, the senator, along with, with our mayor, are big, big critics of everything we do here. Despite all the success we have, they, they demonstrate an inability to want to recognize that, only because it's convenient to them. That's what I feel. I, I don't know where you stand with, with, with the senator. Is this campaign of yours and your running mates something that he's going to fund again? Because it's my understanding, he just recently had another fundraiser for an organization that, that he uses to, to run candidates through. Are you going to be part of that or are you independent from that?
Yeah, me and my candidates are, are independent of that. We do what we, you know, what we think is right. And believe me, as a teacher, you know, my union and others have had many issues also with Mr. Lesniak, so it, it behooves me to separate myself from those, those people that you like to say. But like I said, I've had many support from many people that dislike what the Elizabeth Board of Education does and I'll take, you know, I'll take their support.
You take their support, you take their money as well?
If people are going to be willing to give to my campaign, sure.
Okay, I mean, they have in the past.
Correct, sure.
They have. So, you know, let's, let's be honest with each other, right? To hold the record, you've been a candidate that has run with the, the support of Senator Lesniak and the funding of Senator Lesniak.
And others, correct.
Okay, but at the end of the day, that's the truth, right? I'm not, I'm not making anything up. I'm not accusing you.
No, but it's not the whole truth, so if you.
Okay, no, if you want to elaborate, what's the whole truth? I mean, so I'm just, so I'm clear.
Like I said, many people in this community have supported me. And you know, you can look that up.
Yeah, yeah. If we put a percentage on the amount of money that your campaign receives from Senator Lesniak opposed to the rest of all this many people, would you say it's the majority of the money?
On September thirteenth at the next meeting, if you allow me longer than three minutes, I will let you know. Yes.
You don't want to answer the question or you don't know?
I don't have those numbers, sir.
Oh, you don't?
No.
Listen, if someone contributed fifty thousand dollars to my campaign, I would know who they are.
And I'm sure you do.
I would know. I would, you know, I would definitely know. I'm sure. If there's someone out there that wants to fund me that way, I would be happy to, perhaps a higher office.
We didn't even get close to that amount when we ran.
What's that?
I said, we didn't even get close to that amount when we ran, sir.
No, okay. I, you know, I don't have the numbers either, but I'm aware that, and we get back to the point. The fact is that your candidacy is supported by Senator Raymond Lesniak, who is a self-proclaimed power broker in the state of New Jersey, who going forward has tried to do everything, who has vowed to destroy this Elizabeth Board of Education. So that concerns me when you take the support. Are you willing to distance yourself from Senator Raymond Lesniak and Chris Bowich? And away from their stance on this, on the Board of Education? Or are you standing with them?
Sir, I will, I will give, like I told everyone, I give my platform and those who want to support what I'm about will support what I'm about. And that everyone, as you know, I'm sure you're supported by Mr. Fajardo and his other people.
I'm proudly supporting Mr. Fajardo, absolutely.
Correct. So, they know what I'm about. If they want to support me, then they support me. By their support, their support does not mean ownership, if that's what you're trying to get at.
I, I.
They will not pull my strings, but they will not.
No, no, what I'm trying, what I'm trying to, Mr. Rodriguez, what I'm trying to get to here is to understand your motive. Again, why do you want to run? Do you want to run because, you know, I just, I, we see the history, right? Your brother ran from city council, right? He was supported, he was supported by Raymond Lesniak and, and Chris Bowich. And now you're running for the second time with the support of Raymond Lesniak and Chris Bowich. These are career politicians who've been, you know, in politics for over thirty years. I can't expect them to continue to raise money for you and not expect you to do their bidding. Are you naive? Do you feel that?
Well, maybe Mr. Fajardo has that kind of control over you, but they don't have that over me. The reason why I'm running, I'll let you know. The reason why I'm not, I'm sick of the nepotism, the jobs that go to people who don't deserve them, the people, the, the good teachers that are broken spiritually, the teachers who are kicked out, the amount of money that goes into the lawsuits when you kick them out, and it's great. You just give them the money and leave.
That's great. I'm glad you bring up that issue. I'm just, I'm glad you bring up that issue when you say lawsuits, because you know, you know, the Senator Raymond Lesniak has made a living doing business with thousands of school boards, if not millions of dollars with school boards. I know, do you know that?
May I respond to that? Yes. Can I finish?
Yes.
So, I'm sick of those issues. I'm sick that there is a community of haves and have nots, that if some people are so afraid, if they don't pay to the system, their kids won't go to good schools.
Do you have, do you have proof?
Do you, do you like, you have eighteen family schools?
You read statistics, you read statistics.
Before Governor Christie, before Governor Christie, before Governor Christie had a waiver, right, had a waiver for the no child left behind. Before that happened, there was eighteen failing schools. That is, one out of every three schools in this city was failing. Now, the cream, the cream, our best students are one.
What do you propose, here's your chance, what is your, what is your proposal to fix failing schools? What would, what would Commissioner Rodriguez offer the citizens of Elizabeth?
First, first thing, the schools that are dilapidated, the trailers that the students have to go to. You don't think going, if you had to go to.
How would you pay for that, sir? You gotta pay for it.
Can I finish?
Well, no.
Sure, sure. Sure. You know what I would do? I wouldn't pay justice time over a half a million dollars to give a propaganda message. I would keep that, okay? There's almost a million dollars right there.
Okay.
Half a million at the hand, you doubt it was how much else, to his law firm and so on and so forth, okay? But what I would do to fix these failing schools is first, I would instill pride. All those schools that are dilapidated, run down, you know what? I'd fix them. If we can't fix them right away, you know what I would do?
Wait, you know what I would do? You see, you're a bit naive in the way this works. The state, the state has a lot to say on where you spend the money. I don't think you're aware of that.
Let me finish. If we don't have the money right away, George Washington, school number one, you know what I would do? I would move that entire school over to school number twenty eight. Right away.
The whole school?
Right away.
Correct, the whole school.
Gifted and talented schools, the children that are motivated to learn, have great teachers. I would take them.
That is just ridiculous. Vice President De Nozo, I'm sorry.
That is just ridiculous. You're going to move twelve hundred kids into an existing building with another eleven hundred kids? How does that, how does that, how does that improve education? Teachers that are here are laughing at you.
Mr. Trillo, Mr. Rodriguez, we can debate this on the trail and unprecedented, but we thank you for your time. Trillo, thank you for your comments.
Um, Mr. De Nozo, I, I just would like to make a comment and I think that my, my colleague, Mr. Trillo, is just trying to make a point and it's not trying to turn this into a political thing. We tend to focus on our children in Elizabeth and that's where we need to stay focused. And we just want it to be understood that, you know, we're not going to try to turn this into a political fight. We really aren't here to do what's right for the children of Elizabeth. It's a lot of work that, work comes into what we do here. And it's just, it's amazing how everyone on the outside seems to think that they have the answers until they sit in this seat and they don't really understand what goes on behind the scenes and how hard this board and the staff work to make sure that we do what's right for the children. There are a lot of positive things going on and we don't focus on all that negativity that other politicians are putting out there against this district and we are doing so many positive things and we need to just stay focused on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trillo. Thank you, Ms. Mun. I would also like to express the fact that I echo Mr. Trillo's sentiments and Ms. Mun's. I, as a father of two in this district, also am a little concerned about the comments that Mr. Rodriguez makes, the perception that he might have an influence on other people who aren't really quite in, haven't lived through this system or lived in this city even for the last thirty-five, forty years. I'm proud to be a member of this board. I have options to move my kids out of the city, move myself out of the city, but I'm hanging in here because I've seen the changes under the leadership of Superintendent Munoz and the cohesiveness of this board. You might think this is all hunky dory up here, but it's not. We do a lot of infighting in private, but at the end of the day, we all have one thing in common and that's the agenda of the children. We've done a great job in the last five, six, seven years building schools. Not always, it's not always easy because we depend on the state. We're just stewards of that money and a lot of, a lot of interests that have gone on and continue. However, there've been changes of heart in this district. Those tenured, you could call them administrators, teachers, bureaucrats, who really don't have to support us, have supported us. And that's just a fine sign of what we've been doing as a board under the leadership of Superintendent Munoz. So, I too would like to reflect on Mr. Trillo's comments and Ms. Mun's comments. I'd also like to call up now Margie Chavaria, one twenty-three Westfield Avenue. Please step up to the mic.
Hello. Okay, I like how you guys really say how you are proud people of living in Elizabeth. I've lived, I was born and raised in Elizabeth. My first meeting to this, of this board, I brought my Elizabeth High School EHS jacket. And what I saw, my first meeting was BS, to be honest. It was all politics. If this is supposedly a meeting of the board and the public, not a meeting of the public, then what are you doing for two hours in private? Okay, my daughter was still, okay, she finally got a classification, but with no IEP that is right for her. I called the supervisor to special services like over a week ago. I have yet to hear from her. I go to her office, she's not around. How do you get past, you know, I'm still looking for Orton Gillingham. I'm looking for, I was already told by special services that I could get a neuropsychologist, neuropsychiatrist, somebody to evaluate my child as well. She is going into the seventh grade with between a two point six to a five point one level. So if that isn't failing our children, you tell me what is? And I don't, you know, there's just so much going on. I mean, I would like to know what are the qualifications to be on the board? Can somebody let me know? Like, I don't know how is it when I do call for the superintendent, I get Amy all the time. I get Amy, but I don't get the superintendent. You know, I don't know what was the problem. You know, most of the time I would get somebody, secretary. You know, just like I get Yolanda when I'm calling the director to, you know, special services. You know, how, how come I don't get, you know, the person I'm looking for? You know, so I could look for some results for my child. Like I said, she's about to go into seventh grade, you know, with some really low scores on her. You know, and I'm still looking for Orton Gillingham. I'm still looking for different things, great oral reading test. I want a reading specialist. I mean, if I could have, I wish I could have brought her collaborative report. I wish somebody on that board, since you, I don't know what you were doing. I mean, can somebody go into my daughter's file and read it over, you know, and do something and actually respond back to me instead of saying thank you? Anybody? Okay, thanks.
We've got your name and address here. I'm gonna make sure the, the person that would have this, give you a phone call and follow up tomorrow, next week. And I know you've been here several times and I'd certainly like to address your issue. This way I can give you a more concrete answer. I'd certainly like to address it and hopefully not at the next meeting, but somewhere in between. Thank you, Mr. Chavaria.
Excuse me, I would like to put to your attention, and perhaps Mr. Rodriguez could back me up on this, if he teaches special ed. There is a procedure that is foul, there's guidelines and timeframe from beginning to end. I believe probably you may have a little bit more issue because it's the summertime and a lot of people may be out. But the law calls for a policy, it's ninety days from beginning to end. And perhaps Mr. Rodriguez could explain you what I tried to explain you, but I'd be more than happy to go over with you. I don't want you to feel that they were putting you off or anything like that, because every child is special to us here, especially when you're facing different issues.
I understand that, you know, but it's just, I've been fighting this fight with my daughter since the second grade. It happened to be her second grade teacher at this meeting, okay, just July third, just last month. And she said that my daughter was more outgoing years ago than she is now. Well, to be honest, duh, if she has been struggling her whole educational life, where do you think she is going to be at?
Well, there is help. We can't, we can't fix what happened in the past, but you as a parent have the right to question every year. Every year, why this is not happening, why she's not making progress or anything. So you have the right. So we'll make sure that this is followed through from now on. But I just want you to know that there is a process. If you have any questions, I've been attending the hearings at Shrek with Senator Ruiz, Tenecita Ruiz, and Barbara Dolberg. She was there and she was testifying in regards to special education. Believe me, everything.
I heard Mark McMillan did tell me she would go to the meeting, to the IEP meeting, and she didn't come. She did tell me that she would go and she didn't come. That's all there is, long as she's on the other side.
Well, we make sure that somebody will follow through, okay?
I hope so. Thank you, Mr. Chavaria. Thank you, Mrs. Spina. I'd like to call to the microphone, Wiarson Gonzalez, nine forty-five Adams Avenue.
I'm here to address some of the public speaking, response time. My name is Wiarson Gonzalez. I am a resident of Elizabeth. In previous months, we have given you two hundred fourteen signatures. Tonight, we have one hundred thirty-one more. I represent the Elizabeth Educational Association Committee, an independent group of parents and interested residents who would like to take a rightful place with you. who would like to take a rightful place with you in improving our public schools. The petition and process states that persons wishing to speak at a school board meeting may sign up until seven P.M. Response time may no later than seven-thirty P.M. before the business part of the meeting, as many government boards in our area already do. Student performances and award presentations will be held at another time. At the beginning of the public response time, you state the rules for our public, our participation. We would like to see this in writing. At every meeting, you state that the scope in the school board meeting are not public meetings, but meetings in public. The New Jersey statute, Title eighteen A, Subtitle V, Part Three, Chapter Ten states, "All board meetings shall be public." So school board meetings are public. We will be here with more signatures each month until and including October. Before the November elections, we will have a candidate tonight. We will ask the candidate for their position on this proposed change of policy. The voters will be interested in their position. Some of the comments we have made by board members since April about our petition are, "Many nights are early for public response time." That's not the pattern. If it is early, it's summer. The city council is for the community, we are here for the children. How do you separate the children from our parents and the rest of the taxpayers? We offer, we have office hours. When parents come, you are often not there. The community involvement department is available. Mr. Dunn has not been able to answer many of our concerns. Thank you for the board members who have been respectful in listening to this session.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. I'd like to call up to the microphone, George E. Casalins, 745 Thomas Street. Jorge E. Casalins, 745 Thomas Street. Going once, going twice. I'd like to close the public session of this meeting. The president requests a motion to go into private session to consider matters exempt under the Open Public Meetings Act specifically for discussion of personnel, specifically reorganization, rental properties, revision of board policies, harassment, intimidation, and bullying of results and workers' compensation claims, specifically GK, JG, RD, RR, CS, DK, NO, SL, MD, CK, JB, JD, and VF. The board will reconvene and call it to take formal action.
Motion to go into private.
Motion made by Mr. Trujillo, seconded by Ms. Aristo. Any questions or comments? Hearing on roll call, Ms. Kennedy.
Aristo.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mun.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Trujillo.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Yes. We are in private.